We're gonna start at three, seven thirty-five. Okay. Call to order, please. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. Uh, Trustee Matso, would you lead us in the opening prayer, please?
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Holy Father, spring is a metaphor for change. Some changes we eagerly await and some we abhor. Some changes we plan and others arrive uninvited. To all these changes, we ask the gift of your perspective beckoning us to expectation, hope, and rebirth. May the sunlight and the rain be reminders that you are at work renewing the earth. As the God of renewal, you are ever at work in our lives too. Open our eyes and lives to the needed changes in our lives this spring. Awaken us to new life and perspective, for we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Trustee Matso. Um, Vice Chair, uh, Murphy, would you, could you please, uh, read the motions adopted in camera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One point two motions adopted in camera. A motion regarding property was adopted in camera. One point three information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Kevin Campbell retiring effective March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Karen Becker, Tony Seelin, Amy Main, Joanne Powell, and Jennifer Eust retiring effective June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Paul Sheen-Colo retiring effective August thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Agnew, seconded by Trustee Duarte. Can I have... Yes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to add one information item, uh, to the agenda, uh, Ontario Autism Program update.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee Guzzo, Trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, moving on to presentations, we now, uh, invite Jack Amendolia from... I'm sorry, sir. Oh. Declarations of interest. Yes, sir.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I am declaring a comp- uh, conflict with the item ten point seven, two thousand and nineteen twenty budget survey results. Uh, teacher salaries, I mentioned in the survey, my wife is a teacher with the board. Discussions on this item could at some point affect the peculiar interests of teachers.
When we get to the item, let's have part of the room.
Point of ours, public meeting, I can stay in the room as long as they don't participate at all.
All right. So item number four, presentations. Uh, Mr. Amendolia, from Watson and Associates, will give us a presentation on EDC charges.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll be quick and I'll leave it over to Jack. Um, so the purpose of this presentation tonight is to provide the board of trustees with a little bit of an overview as to the, uh, the application and scope of education development charges as they relate to, to provincial standard and how they relate to the board, as well as to bring you up to speed as to where the board currently stands with its existing two thousand and eighteen education development charges by law, uh, where we're moving to next, and some of the occurrences that's happened over, uh, the past year that have, uh, changed our normal course of action. So with that, I pass it over to, uh, Mr. Jack Amendolia.
Thanks, Fred, and thanks to the board for having me here tonight. Um, as Mr. Tebow mentioned, uh, really the purpose or why I was asked to speak to you tonight was really to give an update as to what's going on with regard to the education development charges. Um, also a little bit of a refresher, knowing that many of the trustees were newly elected this year and haven't gone through the EDC process yet. I think it's important to have a little bit of an EDC one-on-one, so you guys have a bit of an understanding about what the process entails. In addition, the board has to amend their current EDC bylaw in the next couple of months, so prior to that amendment, um, it would definitely help to have a, a little bit of basis and understanding of what that process looks like as well. So really to start off, what we're gonna talk about is what an education development charge is. So the definition of an education development charge is it's a development charge that is imposed under a bylaw respecting growth-related net education land costs that are incurred or proposed to be incurred by a school board. So really what that means is that the EDC is a charge. It's a charge that we levy on new residential or non-residential development. So when you go out to take a permit, whether you're an individual taking out a permit, or whether you're a developer taking out a thousand permits for a new condo or for a new subdivision, to every permit, there are attached different fees when you go and take out that permit. And one of those fees that are attached to that building permit is an education development charge. So when you go and you take out that permit, that's when you pay the EDC, and those EDCs are then collected by the municipality, and then the municipality transfers those funds over to the school board. The revenue that the boards collect from the EDC is then used to purchase school sites for new schools to be built upon. One important distinction is any revenues that are collected for EDCs can only be used to purchase new school sites and to develop those school sites. So no monies to the, from the EDCs can be used towards actual construction costs. So right now, the EDCs for boards that have them, for boards that qualify EDCs, are really the primary source that those boards have, like I mentioned, to fund those new school board acquisitions, and that's for school boards that are experiencing growth in their jurisdiction. That's important to note because knowing today's funding model, in the past, boards had taxation open to them, so they can adjust budgets on a yearly basis if they didn't have enough funds, let's say, to buy new schools. Because that option isn't available to school boards anymore, and boards now rely more on, on a, a provincial grant, uh, fund model, um, these EDCs are really important nowadays, because it's really one of those only funding sources that boards have that still allow you a little bit of flexibility to actually go out and purchase school sites and not rely on government funds to do so. So right now, the board's existing EDC bylaw covers your entire jurisdiction, which is the region of Halton. Your existing education development charge is two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars per residential dwelling unit. So as I was talking about before, if I go take out a permit for one new residential unit, I would pay two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for that unit. If I was building ten houses, I would pay twenty-two sixty-nine times ten permits, and, and so on, and so on. The non-residential charge that the board charges is fifty-eight cents per square foot of gross floor area. And the, the charge is actually divided eighty-five percent towards residential and fifteen percent towards non-residential. And what that means is within the EDC bylaw itself, there are certain, uh, policies that the board, the board of trustees decide on. So a couple of those policies, the legislation allows you to charge anywhere from zero percent to forty percent of your education development charges to non-residential development. The average around the province is around ten or fifteen percent for most boards. Some have zero, some have a little bit higher, but the average is around ten or fifteen percent, and that's what your board has, is a fifteen percent non-residential charge. The same as your co-terminus board, the Halton Public Board as well. So both boards charge EDCs, both in the region of Halton, both on this eighty-five, fifteen split. So the calculation itself is, is very formulaic, it's very technical, it's very prescribed. The Education Act, the Ontario, Ontario Regulation two thousand and ninety-eight, and in addition, the government has also put out a set of EDC guidelines that they ask consultants and boards to follow when calculating the charge. So there isn't a lot of leeway for boards or consultants to determine how to calculate this charge. It has been very prescribed for us. And up on the screen now, there's just some general steps that, that we follow in terms of the calculation. So obviously demographics, enrollment projections are what determines our need. How do we know how many school sites or how many new schools the board is gonna need over the next fifteen years? We do enrollment projections. Like I said, legislation, board planning, and in addition to those enrollment projections, tells us how many s- school sites we're going to require. The land appraisal is determined the site acquisition cost, and I have this underlined only because I'm sure even if you don't know a lot about EDCs, I'm sure trustees have heard about the increasing DCs and EDCs in, in the province. A lot of it is really directly, directly related to the price of land. As we're aware, the price of land has been skyrocketing. We'll look at this, um, in a couple of minutes, but that's really why EDCs have been going up. And we get qualified appraisers to do appraisals for us on a per acre basis throughout different areas in the jurisdiction to come up with their per acre values. Uh, site prep costs, so to develop the site so a school can be built on it, grading, um, bringing services to the lot line. That's all based on actual historical board construction costs of new schools that you're building. Uh, reserve funds. So if the board has a surplus or a deficit in, in your existing EDC reserve fund, right now there's a deficit, that gets rolled into the future charge as well. Those total costs, so the, the enrollment determines how many sites we're nee- we're gonna need, the appraisals and the site prep costs tell us how much that's gonna cost, the reserve fund tells us what our balance is at. Basically, all of those costs combined are what we call our total net education land cost, and that's ultimately what we're trying to collect EDCs for. And then, like I mentioned a little bit earlier, there's different board policies, res, non-res, whether the charge is applied, uh, equally across the region, or there's area-specific charges, whether we apply it to, um, single-family homes, the same as we apply it to condos. Those are ultimately policy decisions that the trustees make. That's the last step. Right now, your bylaw, like I mentioned, eighty-five, fifteen, res, non-res split, it's applied uniformly across all areas of, of Halton, so whether you take out a permit in Milton or in Oakville, the charge is the same. And whether you build single-family townhouses, apartments, the charge is distributed equally among all, amongst all types of development. So before a board, w- once you go through those steps, there's certain things that the board has to do before you're legally eligible to pass an EDC bylaw or a new EDC bylaw. So all boards have to prepare an EDC background study, and that's where the consultants come in, and that's what we help the board prepare. The background study itself, and this is different from municipal development charges, if anyone's familiar with that, in municipal development charges, there's no approval of that study necessary. With the school board development charges, the Minister of Education must approve the assumptions in the background study. And I have that bolded only because that relates to sort of the update and where we're at with the ministry right now. The board has to have public meetings before they pass a bylaw, so there is a statutory public engagement process, and the study must be available at least two weeks prior to that first public meeting, and as well, notice of those public meetings must be provided at least twenty days prior to that first public meeting. So with regard to where we're at and what's going on with the ministry right now, so just, I'll try to be brief, um, but I'll give a, a quick history of sort of what happened and, and where we're at today. So when these, when this board and your co-terminus board, uh, were in the process of passing their renew- the renewal of your EDC bylaws last spring of two thousand and eighteen, uh, we were going through the process, we knew that there was a provincial election coming up, so we were in constant communication with the ministry, ensuring that the provincial election wouldn't bump into our renewal, uh, process, EDC renewal process. We were constantly assured by the ministry that the election wouldn't be an issue until I think about a week, um, before we were considering bylaw passage, where we were notified by the ministry, um, that the approvals that I talked about, the background study approvals that are necessary to pass a new bylaw, wouldn't be approved by the minister prior to the election, but we were assured that the approvals would be forthcoming, uh, post the election. We were just told that, uh, perception, optics, it had become an issue, and the government didn't feel comfortable doing this before the election. Um, we were told after it wouldn't be a problem, and that it was a non-government matter, because I asked the question, what if the government changes? We were told it's an internal ministry matter, and that it would, it would all be done shortly after the election. Shortly after the election, we received word that the new government that was in power is not going to approve the background studies or any background studies until they've done a more full-sum review of the EDC legislation. So what ended up happening at that time is the bylaws have a maximum period of five years. You can extend it no matter what, no exceptions in the legislation. So because the board didn't get their approvals last year, these board, the two boards in Halton, their bylaws actually lapsed. And when the bylaws lapsed, there was no EDC in place, so if you're going to take out a permit, the twenty-two-hundred-dollar charge that we were talking about was zero. So what happened is permits that were taken out during that week that we had a lapse of a bylaw obviously resulted in a revenue loss for this board and for your co-terminus board. As a result of that, there was political pressure put on the government and the ministry, um, by your board and board of trustees, and as a result of that, we entered into some negotiations and discussions with the ministry, and they agreed to give, um, a, a conditional approval, I think is the best way to put it. Um, and basically what had to happen was that both boards, both Halton Board trustees, said that they voluntarily are going to approve this study at the existing rate, so not at the proposed increase in rates that were proposed last year, but at the existing rates for a period of, a maximum period of one year. So that was this, this, um, handshake agreement. There was nothing changed in the legislation at the time. It was a handshake agreement that was made between these two boards and the Ministry of Education to basically get the bylaw back in place to stop the, the lack of collections that was going on in that, that week, week and a half, I think it was. Um, so, so the bylaws were put back in place, like I said, at the existing rate that they had before that we were considering a renewal, um, and, and sort of that was that for the time being. In the interim, what happened, so you see at the bottom of the slide, October twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, provincial government actually made a change, an official change to the legislation. So these, these bylaws were in place under this sort of handshake agreement. Then in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, the, the ministry actually made a change to the legislation, so they amended Ontario Regulation two thousand and ninety-eight with Ontario Regulation four thirty-eight eighteen. And basically what that legislation did is it really mirrored the handshake agreement between the Halton Boards and the ministry. So the legislation officially froze all EDC rates that were in place as of August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, at that effective rate. It limited the boards to change any areas that their bylaws were subject to. So let's say you had a jurisdiction-wide bylaw, and the board said, no, we wanna go area-specific, or we wanna take, you know, Halton Hills out of the equation. The legislation effectively froze the rates and didn't allow boards to make any of those policy changes that I spoke about. Um, so really, in essence, froze the rates, limited the boards to change the areas of which EDCs applied in, and limited the board to make any policy changes. Um, it also, a couple of things that don't really apply to this board, but if you were a board that was looking to implement EDCs for the first time, that was actually frozen, and it also streamlined a few of the requirements in terms of what we have to, uh, give the ministry for their review. So that's where we're at. We're still in this frozen state. Um, a couple of things I wanna end off on. So because we're in this frozen state, and because the board, these two, the Halton Catholic Board and the Halton Public Board, had to pass this bylaw before the legislation change got made, we're still under that handshake agreement where we were only able to pass a bylaw for a maximum term of one year. We're still able to, uh, pass a bylaw for a maximum of five years according to the legislation, but the ministry asked us for a one-year maximum at that time. So in the next couple of months, what the board has to go through is an amendment to their existing EDC bylaw. It, assuming we don't hear anything from the ministry that changes anything, if things stay status quo, the rate again will stay the same because it's been frozen according to the legislation. The amendment will just increase the term of the bylaw to prevent it from lapsing. So, um, the board is probably gonna increase it for another year, or has the ability to increase it up to four more years for a maximum of five years. Just quickly to end off tonight, um, a couple of things. So just so the boards are aware, what the proposed charge was going to be last spring before the ministry implemented this freeze was thirty-six, forty-eight per residential unit, and eighty-three cents per square foot on the non-residential side. So again, just for awareness, um, the current rates that are frozen are about sixty-two percent of what the proposed residential rate was going to be last spring, and about seventy, on the residential side, and about seventy percent on the non-residential side. So I just mentioned earlier, I had that line underlined about appraised values and, and how we determine the cost of land, and obviously EDCs have been increasing rapidly over really the last twenty years. Just so you, so again, for awareness, um, purposes, the land values that you see on the screen right now were what were used, um, last spring for the calculation of the new EDC. So you can see rates in Oakville, almost two-point-four million per acre, in Milton, about one-point-eight million an acre. I'd argue that those are already a year later, well higher than those. Um, and in Halton Hills, about just under one-point-six million an acre. The chart on, on the very bottom right there shows what the values were when we did the study in two thousand and thirteen, so about six years ago, compared to two thousand and eighteen. You can see that Oakville was under a million, um, about six years ago. Milton was, I think, around five-hundred thousand. Halton Hills was in the four-hundred thousand range. So we can see when we talk about EDCs going up, just looking at this chart gives us a really clear indication of why those land val- or why those costs have been increasing over the last several years. So just a quick review. Um, like I mentioned at the onset of this presentation, EDCs enable the recovery of growth-related land costs only, so an important distinction. Not all school boards qualify for EDCs, so you do have to meet an eligibility trigger. The bylaws themselves have a maximum period of five years, no exceptions. The background study assumptions must be approved by the minister before a board can pass a new bylaw, and right now, all EDC rates across the province are currently frozen, pending a Ministry of Education review. We hear that there's possibilities that the ministry may come, um, with some options or some news, um, probably in the fall, or sorry, in the late summer or early fall. Um, so again, pending this bylaw and, and the expiry that's coming up, we are not likely to hear anything from the ministry before that. So like I said, ministry review is ongoing. Our bylaw, this board's bylaw expires in July two thousand and nineteen, so must be amended, uh, prior to that expiry. I'd be happy to take any comments or questions.
Through you, Mr. Chair, something quick. Uh, the timeline, tentative timelines as to what we wanna do to, uh, make the amendment to extend the bylaw for one year is in your package. It is on page two of the reports and two of the package. It provides us a brief timeline as to what will be presented to the board trustees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amendolia. Any questions? Mr. Murphy?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm just trying to understand, uh, the government's motivation, which is a very difficult thing to do, we all know. Uh, so the EDC charges are paid by the developer, which is ultimately built into the cost of the home. Market pressures will dictate whether that's acceptable or not. If it's not, the price of the houses are too expensive, there's less people, there's less need for schools. What is the, uh, what is your perception of the reason why this is frozen when really it has no impact on the provincial government whatsoever?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, I'll be careful how I answer that, and just so trustees are clear, this is my opinion and my perception. Um, and I have been involved in government negotiations with my firm, um, and community consultations, both with the government, with the development community, so I have some background and, and some awareness to that question. The government's rationale as to why they're reviewing EDCs and DCs is their, their rationale is affordable housing, and they're saying that there's not enough affordable housing, and one, and they're basically looking at four different components of, of why they're looking at affordable housing, or what aspects of affordable housing they're looking at. One of those components that involves my firm and the EDCs was government-imposed fees. Um, so that can be DCs, it can be building permit fees, it's, it's all government-imposed fees that go into development. Um, so that, that was the rationale as to why they're reviewing this, and if they can reduce government-imposed fees, the argument is that house prices would go down. And more importantly, I think, from what the development community is telling the government, it's not so much the quantum of the fees, but it's the process that goes into development and how that's slowing down and bottlenecking supply, which is causing an increase in house prices. When you ask me my perception and my opinion, and, and we have a lot of data to back this up, and we provided it to the government, like you alluded to, these fees, especially government-imposed fees in general, are a miniscule amount when we're talking about the, the factors that go into the price of a house. I agree that they're typically built in to the price of the house and passed on to the home buyer. I would agree that economic factors like interest rates and borrowing and debt have much more of a factor on housing affordability. Um, EDCs, govern- like I said, government-imposed fees are a small percentage of that, uh, price of a house, of a new house. And when we talk about DCs, maybe they're a little bit larger, but when we start to, to really talk about EDCs, they're, they're a miniscule amount that would never move the needle in terms of, of factoring in, in terms of housing affordability. So, so I guess the answer is the rationale, um, used by the government was to study housing affordability and, and how government-imposed fees relate to that. In my opinion, I think it's, it's, you know, you're kind of barking up the wrong tree if you think that those are going to reduce the cost of houses. And quite frankly, like you said, the market bears what the market bears. If you took EDCs and, you know, reduced the house of a price by, you know, the price of a house by a thousand dollars, the developer's not necessarily gonna knock a thousand dollars off that house. It's probably gonna go to profit margins, 'cause if the market can bear a million bucks, then that's what people are gonna pay. So, sorry, a little bit of a long-winded answer, but I just wanted to ensure that all the facts were out there.
Trustee O'Brien, yes?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So if we do pass a new bylaw that lasts five years, and the government does, um, reconsider in the fall, can we change our rate? I think you might even sit in here.
Yeah, so good question. So if you had a, a five-year bylaw, and with, you know, next year the government comes up with new regulations, so the board has a couple of options. If those new regulations weren't so material as to having to do a new background study, new enrollment projections, new appraisal rates, we may be able to amend the study, 'cause we're allowed to amend the study to increase the rate of the EDC up to once per year, up to once in a calendar year. So again, if they weren't material and, and the government said, hey, we've studied it, um, you know what, we agree the rates in your background study that you were going to implement in two thousand and eighteen are, are good to go, go ahead. We can, we may be able to do it with an amendment. If there are more material, we may have to open up the background study again and redo the background study. So it, it's, it's hard for me to answer until we know sort of what those changes look like, and that's gonna, that's gonna be sort of the driving factor as to whether the board has to do a new background study.
Forward, uh, just one more, uh, piece. Uh, if you look back at the two thousand and thirteen EDC bylaw, when we passed the background study, the board did endeavor to do at least an annual amendment to those charges. study, the board did endeavor to do at least an annual amendment to those charges, so as to keep up with the annual escalation of land. So that makes it so that we're not incurring as much of a deficit or more debt as we're buying sites pretty much every year. And further, that smoothes out the curve as well so that it's not a staggering increase as you saw between the first year and the fifth year. So that was also appreciated by the development community.
Anymore. Trustee Carrabella.
And during that, thank you, during that week and a half where there was no, where our bylaw lapsed, were there many applications? Did we lose a lot of money?
A lot, yes. Some of it was luck or bad luck. I think a large condo development just happened to go in with five-hundred units that week. That was the bulk, I think, of the loss. Some of it was, you know, savvy developers, if you had your, you know, ducks in a row and you were ready to put your permit in and you found out that you had that week, then, yeah, there was definitely a rush, I think. But yeah, some of it was just bad luck. But yeah, it was, it was significant.
Trustee Murphy.
So we have a short, a significant shortfall in the funding, thirty, thirty-eight percent. So what is, what's the practical implications of that? Is that just a deficit that builds and builds? And then how do we deal with it, or we just leave it on the books and keep it, keep it building?
Yeah, so again, depending on if the ministry changes the rules, let's, let's assume that the rules stay the same and as they are now, and the board, and ministry allows boards to re-implement EDCs, that, that deficit gets rolled into the next EDC. So every time the board has a deficit and we calculate, let's say, for example, we calculated the net education land costs and they were a hundred dollars, and the board had a ten-dollar deficit, your net education land cost would then be a hundred and ten dollars. So if this deficit continues to expand because we're not collecting what we should, it's just going to make those future EDC rates higher.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the artificial turf replacement project for the Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School. So this project is exactly as it sounds, replacing the artificial turf carpet at Bishop Reading. This project was originally contemplated as part of the two thousand and nineteen facility renewal projects, but as it was removed due to the complexity of coordinating the addition there along with the turf removal, as we, as you all know, we have a large-scale addition project planned for Bishop Reading, which is now approved by the ministry. So a lot of the site reconfiguration and parking reconfiguration will take place this summer. So without the complexity of that, of doing the turf and getting the turf in and out of the site while doing the parking lots at the same time would be, would add too much complexity to the site. However, through our discussions with the town of Milton, they've actually offered us, they have a parking lot just to the south of our site that actually touches the artificial turf field. They've actually offered us to use their parking lot as a staging area to access the turf field, which would allow us to do it at the same time and do it this summer. And I can say as well that assessing the condition of the field, Bishop Reading was installed in the second year that we installed artificial turf surfaces at our schools. So we did, over a period of five years, we did all of, all nine of our secondary schools. Bishop Reading was in round two of that. It is by far the most-used turf field that we have in our board. Milton youth soccer uses it a ton, basically every night of the summer when it's accessible. So it, it, it is in need of being replaced, and as such, we proposed a project tonight. So the idea would be, we'd run this project concurrently with the addition project. They wouldn't be tendered to the same company, they'd be run as two separate projects, but the work would take place over the July and August period this summer. The project cost is estimated at nine-hundred thousand dollars, which is inclusive of professional fees and contingency. Of course, it'll still be competitively tendered to get the best price, so we hope that the bids come in lower than that anyways. So we have two resolutions for trustees' consideration that'll come back at the April second board meeting. The first is to approve staff to proceed with the project, and the second is to approve the project budget. So if you have to take any questions that trustees may have on this project.
Trustee Antumazi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. What is the replacement time? Duration, that is?
Uh, the replacement time for this would be, sorry, in terms of how long it's been there?
No, 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 the rate, it went in in two thousand and nine, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So how long is it going to take to replace it?
Typically about four to six weeks. It really depends on when you lift up the carpet, how bad the base is, but we anticipate about four to six weeks, so well within the nine weeks that we have of the summer, summer break period.
Follow-up. Does that pay for itself? Yeah, given the high usage, are we collecting sufficient funds to go into the replacement value of it?
I would say certain fields that we have do. I think Bishop Reading being our highest use would definitely, we recruit the cost, both in terms of avoided maintenance costs for cutting the grass and lining the field, as well as the rental fees that we recoup through our, our community use programs. Other ones have more challenges. You know, Bishop Reading has lights on it as well, so we can use it extended hours in the evenings and in the fall. Other sites such as Oakville, we have no lights in any of our fields in Oakville, so they're more challenging to recruit the cost.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on. This item is going to be added on the April second regular in-camera meeting. Superintendent Carl, please report on the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year calendar.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to present the staff report on the school year calendar for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. I want you to note the calendar was created by our school year calendar committee, which includes members from CPIC, OACTA Elementary and Secondary, Halt and Student Transportation, QP, our principal associations, and our board chair. We also consult with the Halton District School Board as there is a financial cost for transportation when we do not align our professional activity days with theirs. So I'm happy to report that our committee came to a consensus with the calendar and that we're in alignment with the Halton District School Board calendar, and we provided a summary of the topics for the professional activity days. I would want you to know we are anticipating, based on recent ministry announcements, there will be a change in one of the topics for the PA days. At this time, we do not have specific information on which PA day that will be. And we're looking for a resolution on approval of the calendar at the upcoming board meeting. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
No questions. So this item is going to, again, be dealt with on April second regular in-camera board meeting. We're moving on to information items, and I'm going to ask Secretary Daly to address autism update.
Sorry, we want to deal with it at the end as opposed to the beginning? Okay.
At the end?
Yeah. So we'll go to, we'll stick?
No problem.
Yeah.
We're flexible. So in that case, I'm going to ask student trustee Mazza to please report.
So we have a student senate meeting on March twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday at Bishop Reading, so we hope to discuss with the students their perspective on the new changes, student trustee elections, we might get sweatshirts for senate and stuff like that. We also have a See the Problem, Be the Solution Gala coming up in April on the fourth at Corpus Christi. So this is where we recognize the students' efforts in making the songs or artistic submissions to our See the Problem, Be the Solution initiative, and we present the winners with their check. We also have student trustee elections on Tuesday, April twenty-third at Loyola, and that's about it. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? No questions. Oh, trustee Carrabella.
Thank you. So do you already have the students, student trustees who are candidates, have they already submitted, find their, their names?
I think they're in the process of doing that, so they, they have to submit to their principals first, so I think the principals are looking it over now, and like by the end of March, I think they'll be finalized.
Trustee Antumazi.
They're candidates for student trustee. Do they have any members of the senate?
They do not. I was not last year.
Any other questions? Thank you, trustee Mazza. Moving on to the next item, Superintendent Narap, please report on school educational field trips.
So the trips, the spring trips that the schools are taking are before you, and as well, you'll see towards the end of the package, a number of our, our school trips based on students qualifying for the offset championships in various athletic events. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? No questions, thank you. Superintendent Merrick, can you please report on Saint Nicholas Catholic Elementary School?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the construction report for Saint Nicholas School for February. So you can see the work today's been done, has been primarily setting up the engineered pad for the, for the school. We now have footings going in, mostly complete for the classroom section, the back portion of the school. And actually, masonry work started yesterday on the, on the, on the back portion of the school as well, so the walls are starting to take shape. I'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving on to, again, Mr. Merrick, to report on Saint Mark Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, this is the Saint Mark School Edition Project construction report for February. So we received occupancy back on February twenty-sixth. The school moved in to the, I guess, the ground floor of the school, the first floor, to the classroom portion on March fourth, and the early on and childcare are moving in this week. So the school's starting to take shape and everyone's moving into their, to their new spaces. We have a few items to clean up within the building, as well as the outdoor play area for the childcare center needs to take place as well, once we have the weather improving. I'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Any question? Trustee Antum, O'Brien, sorry.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Merrick, there were some issues about playground being ice older. Was that, do you feel addressed?
Yeah, so with the, oh, a lot of the blacktop play area, the asphalt play area was, was blocked off for construction for the majority of the winter. Since the construction is now complete, we've scaled that back. A lot of the asphalt, a lot of it was ripped up to bring in the new services for the addition. So we've actually ripped out all the asphalt now and brought in limestone screenings and packed it, so there's an outdoor play area now. It's kind of like, I don't know, I compare it to playing on a baseball infield, it's kind of the surface we have there now. Once we have the portables that the students were in moved out in the spring, we will be repaving the entire area as the, the rest of the field takes shape. But there is an outdoor play area for the students now, and they'll, they'll be back on the field again as the snow melts in the field and it comes back in shape for the, or dries out for the, the spring season, they'll be back on the field as well.
Any more questions? The next item, again, Mr. Merrick, is a report on Assumption Catholic Secondary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, this is the construction report for the Assumption Edition Project for February. As you can see, we have interior demolition is wrapping up now, and we have the mechanical and electrical works ongoing in the building. Coming up in this month, we'll start the exterior foundations for the new addition and continue with the M and E work on the, both the new addition as well as the renovation works to the, to the existing building. So if you have any questions that trustees may have.
Any questions, please? Thank you very much, Mr. Merrick. The next item is long-term capital plan and update, updated projections from Mr. Tebow.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is just an update report as to the progression of Planning Services updating the long-term capital plan, just to bring you up to speed. Last year, we started the full review of the plan and updating it based on what was first presented in two thousand and thirteen, now that that was approved in principle by the board of trustees. What we're moving on now as a new initiative by Planning Services is to do annual updates. As we're discussing earlier with EDCs, things change quite rapidly on an annual basis. So now we'll be doing updates to that report on an ongoing basis. Right now, we're essentially in the third portion of the process, so we've announced what our work plan was, now we've provided the ministry projections that were presented to the board of trustees in December, so you're part of that process. Now, upon further review and updating the student population yields that we're generating from development, we've updated the projections and refined them even further, and now we've taken all this information and we've reposted online on the school planning website in the long-term capital planning section. So if you look to the report on page two of the report, page thirty-four of the package, there are four or five links that go directly to your respective pages, whether you want to look at it as a regional outlook or by municipality, and all the projections have been updated with new charts and new fact sheets on each area. Now, the next step in this process will be occurring as, on April second, where Planning Services will be presenting a, the annual facility accommodation report, which will identify what we believe are, an update to the dates on our projected capital projects that we're looking to, so new schools, additions, and things of that nature, other projects, as well as identify spaces that may be available for community partnerships, which aligns with our board policy, I-37 Community Planning and Facility Partnership. So that was part of the, what's referred to as the people, or pardon me, the Community Planning and Partnership Guidelines released by the ministry a little while back. So below are the additional milestones, so again, we'll present that report to board trustees, and then we'll keep you updated on a go-forward basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Any questions? Okay, moving along. Ms. Gidding, please report on the two thousand and nineteen, twenty budget survey results, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The budget consultation report in your agenda package is alignment with our strategic plan in the priority of foundational elements. The purpose of this report is to provide the trustees today with a summary of the feedback that was gathered through the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty budget survey, which is part of the board's annual budget process to gather feedback from stakeholders. And the survey was administered online. It was launched Tuesday, February nineteenth, and it was closed on Thursday, February twenty-eighth, and we received a total of nine-hundred-and-fifty-four responses from parents, students, and staff as well as non-parent community members. So you can see, we do actually include all of the survey responses. If someone wants to go through those, they're there for your information, but we did summarize a couple of thousand open-ended responses for you all, and found some themes that were pretty consistent with strategic planning, specifically with student achievement, focus on technology, special education, and, and promoting our students and our, and our staff. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Trustees have noted.
Thank you.
Just a question, Laura. This year, over others' surveys, is the response rate higher, the same, or lower?
So I only really, thank you for that question. We, I only really looked at last year, and we did see quite a, quite a drop from last year. We had over fourteen-hundred last year, so about a forty percent drop.
Trustee Murphy.
Have the themes or concerns been relatively consistent?
They have. So last year, a slightly different setup of the survey, but we did find that there was a large percentage of parents that prioritized technology, specifically access to technology. There was also a huge emphasis on special education, ensuring that we have the support and increased, decreased waiting times. There was also a focus on mental health that was pretty consistent throughout the two, past two surveys. Materials, the classroom is another theme that comes through very strongly. One of the things that came up this year that wasn't really present last year was a class size. So one of the themes that came through very strongly was maintaining class sizes, probably in response to rumors of the government. But other than that, we're seeing the themes pretty much consistent.
Any other questions? Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you. It's you, Mr. Chair. So how does the, how are some of these things going to be implemented, or did the finance committee look over? uh, things going to be implemented, or did the finance committee look over some of the suggestions? So not my department, so I'll refer to Director Daley to field that, or someone maybe?
Through you, Mr. Chair, at, uh, at this point, trustee Carrabella, it's really information, uh, for trustees, um, to start the process, and as we start to go through our budget process at the departmental level, it'll, it'll lend some input to you in terms of what our stakeholders, uh, think is important.
Any more questions? Okay, we're gonna move to item ten point eight, Uniform Policy, uh, trustee Agnew and Zernata have asked to put, uh, this for discussion purposes, so, over to you.
Um, as noted on the agenda, it's under the information portion of the agenda, um, this is just for me bringing forth to my fellow trustees, um, in Halton Hills, we recently had two votes, I'm at two schools, and if I could defer to Superintendent Crowell for some data, uh, just for information purposes, to let you know how those votes ended up and the situation in Halton Hills.
Gee, that wasn't the question I was expecting you were to ask, but that's okay, I'll do my best. We did have actually three, three schools that recently went through uniform vote, so Saint Joe's Acton, um, Saint Bridget in, in Georgetown, and, uh, Saint Scholastica in Milton, so I don't have the specific numbers for you, um, but I can tell you that the vote was unsuccessful at Saint Bridget and Saint Joe's Acton, and it was successful at Saint Scholastica in Milton.
There, since we're such an awesome team, I have him here, so, um, so in Saint Joe's, there was a seventy-nine percent response rate, um, so forty-two percent voted yes, fifty-eight percent voted no, um, at Saint Bridget, there was a ninety-one percent response rate, uh, ballots sent out, five hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and eighty-two votes for yes, which is thirty-seven point five percent, and three hundred and three votes no, which is sixty-two point five percent, which already stated with a return rate of ninety-one percent, which in my personal opinion is a very high voice of our stakeholders. So trustee Agnew, would you like to add anything, or?
I think we just wanted to bring it forward because of the recent, um, votes and sort of how they went, and we know that the policy is not a review, uh, not up formally for review until two thousand and twenty-one, but this has obviously kicked up some conversation out in the community, so just wanted to sort of gauge the temperature from, you know, fellow trustees on, um, you know, their, your thoughts around things, are you getting feedback, um, you know, are you having conversations with people, are they looking to have this looked at earlier than two thousand and twenty-one, um, so, you know, again, it's, I think with what was happening with some of these uniform votes, it has started that conversation maybe a little bit earlier, um, than, you know, would have been necessitated through that policy review, so we just really wanted to have a, just a discussion around it.
Just as a point of observation, if I may, I think there was a change, I think there was a change in, uh, suppliers, uh, not too long ago, I'm just wondering whether, um, the results reflect that change, um, and also, um, I think traditionally, we always used one supplier, so I offer my thoughts on that.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, just an historical observation, the Georgetown community, Halton Hills, has never embraced the uniform in any of their votes for uniforms in the past, whether it was McCarthy's or in-school wear, um, other communities, of course, across our other, you know, Oakville, uh, Burlington, and, and Milton have had a variety of responses, the one observation I would make is, I believe there is a process for recall, i.e. that a school council can put the vote to their community to no longer have a uniform, and my observation would just be that no school community, given that option, has ever exercised it in a vote, and I only offer these pieces of information just as historical observations.
Uh, if I can comment, um, if the school uniform policy goes away, and I'm a trustee, I'll be living in the shed, it's a nice shed, but it doesn't have any heating or plumbing, uh, just kidding, as an observation from what I overheard, um, in our community, in, in the community I live in, in Milton, that most of the parents are for the uniform policy, and they embrace it and they love it.
Uh, I'm just wondering, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Hearn, is there anything that we can do better up in Georgetown, because they're obviously not buying what the Board is selling, essentially, and that is uniforms, um, have you heard anything? Can we do something, perhaps as Superintendent McGillicuddy suggested?
Question, um, from the data that I've gathered through the, through the two schools that just recently went through, it is, uh, the top, um, response was too expensive, so whether the data supports that, it's a perception, those are the optics, I don't know, that's a response for the no's, um, and the same with Saint Joe's, there are other things as far as one supplier that came up as far as the no responses, that's all the data I have to talk to right now, and really, really the conversation is just, and I know historically Georgetown has never supported a uniform, so I guess my question is, what are they telling us, like trustee Antumasi is saying, what is it that they want, um, so I'm just bringing it forward, do we wanna discuss it, or do we wanna wait to two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, till the policy's up for review?
Follow-up?
Through you, Mr. Chair, so the thing would be is to maybe go to the principals, the stakeholders up there, and have a meeting to find out exactly what it is that they're not buying into, is it the quality, is it the pricing, is it a combination of the two? And perhaps, you know, when the RFPs come up, which I believe are this year, um, if I'm correct, then maybe we negotiate something that is more affordable, and perhaps that may resolve some of the issues.
Superintendent Crowell.
Sure, if I can just maybe clarify a couple of things, first of all, there is the RFP process which is coming up, so our, our contract with ISW does end at the end of this, uh, calendar year, so December thirty-first, so our purchasing department is currently working on putting together a committee, which we like, which we will sort of prepare the, um, the tender, the tender part of this, um, we would have the opportunity in that, through that RFP process, so there is trustee involvement and representatives in CPIC as well, to be able to have that discussion, here are some of the things that we're looking for, you know, in our new provider, I would, my experience isn't as limited, and I, and, you know, you can certainly join in if you want, there is, the, the schools that I've been in, the meetings that I've attended, and in talking to the parents, there is the tension between price and quality, right, I mean, we could certainly, when we start to lower the price of the items, the quality inevitably is going to suffer, so we wanna try and find a balance, and we're working with those uniform providers, um, so there is the RFP process which is going through right now, and then the policy's not scheduled to be reviewed till two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, so you might be able to achieve getting a better, say, better service for maybe some of those families through the RFP process, but having reopened the policy, my understanding, and I can be corrected here, is that we would have to go to the policy committee to have that policy then reopened.
Trustee Agnew.
So just some, um, information, I, I, and I'm just gonna respond a little bit to, um, Superintendent McGillicuddy's comments as well, is, is, you know, I don't know the historical piece, but I do know that there are currently schools that are looking into, um, whether they can have that conversation, and they can have those votes about the uniform, so just, again, this tends to stir up, you know, what's going on, I think there's been, um, much dissatisfaction with our current supplier, so I think that that is also causing some conversation, so just some of the anecdotal information that's come to me is, you know, looking at, again, you know, the possibility of not having a single supplier, um, um, you know, giving families choice, uh, as far as, you know, where they can purchase perhaps, you know, the Navy bottoms, things like that, so that's something that's come back, um, certainly quality versus price is always a consideration that has come back, and then also, um, some concern around, and this is probably where the policy piece comes in, but some concern around, um, how some schools have a uniform and some don't, and, you know, that is sort of a piece that, you know, parents are talking to one another about, right, is why does this school have it and this school doesn't, and this school's able to vote on it, so just something for consideration, and then also, from a policing perspective, if we're gonna use that term, is there are just, there are some schools that are very strict about where you purchase your uniforms from, and what, you know, that, those uniform pieces are being adhered to, and then there are other schools that are a little bit less strict on those uniform pieces, and, so just some of the stuff that's come back, you know, while these conversations have stirred up.
Trustee Warken.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not even sure if price is the determining factor, uh, literally, if, the price of the uniform is consistent across Halton, all the areas, but in Milton, literally all the schools have gone with the uniform, except I'm thinking OLF, which is, uh, due sometime soon, uh, so basically, Milton is a newer community, a younger community, and, uh, I'm thinking it's community-based, it's, may not be price point.
Uh, a comment and then a question, um, I, I would assume that, um, you know, the, the manufacturers are basing, or the, sorry, the suppliers are basing their pricing on bulk orders that they're placing offshore, and then if we, if we loosen the constraints, then their volume's gonna drop, the price will actually go up, which, so that'll be, that'll be a detriment, that's my knowledge of the textile industry. Uh, second question, uh, do we know how many schools, um, in our system don't have a uniform policy?
Trustee Antumasi.
Chair, um, does CAC, um, have, is, is CAC one of the stakeholders? No, I'm asking if CAC also is one of the stakeholders on the selection when the RFP comes up.
I don't believe so, but I, I can't answer first. Through you, Mr. Chair, um, I held the portfolio for uniforms for a number of years, um, so I'll give you some, I'll answer the question, uh, trustee Antumasi, CAC was not, uh, represented at, at the last RFP, uh, process that we, we engaged in in two thousand and fifteen, um, sixteen, thank you, thank you, Aaron, um, if, if you're considering possibly, you know, changing the policy, uh, and it, sorry, if you're considering changing the idea of going to multiple providers, uh, that is embedded in the policy now that it's a single provider, and so the timing, again, and I, I, I wanna respect what Superintendent Crowell just mentioned about, uh, giving time for the, for the new, for the RFP process to play out, and then, uh, look at the policy, however, if there is, if there's serious consideration about expanding beyond one supplier, you might want to look at the policy prior to the RFP process, because it will affect, uh, the, the pricing and the, uh, service contract that will ultimately be decided upon, if it's more than one, uh, that, that would, would affect it. Regarding the idea of the parents questioning how some schools are in uniform and some are not, uh, again, I, I've been part of this process right from its outset, I was one of the original schools, that was a pilot school at Saint Gabriel and Burlington, both actually Hannah Percasino and myself were principal, vice-principal, um, and at that time, there was discussion around this, this, uh, board, uh, table around the idea where should it be instituted board-wide, should it be school-to-school, and again, my own personal opinion at the time was, I was hopeful that it would be one decided, uh, just because it'd make it easier for schools, but having said that, now, being in the, in the portfolio for many years now, in some ways, the communities have, have just voted with, have decided themselves, and for whatever reason, uh, and trustee O'Hearn, I, I don't know the specifics, why Georgetown, Halton Hills has never fully embraced it, and why Milton loves it, I do know that, uh, and, uh, trustee, Superintendent McGillicuddy, McGillicuddy is correct that no school has ever gone back out of the uniform, however, we've had several schools in the last few years revote, and when they revoked it, it was overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly to stay in the uniform, again, that's just information for yourselves to know that once, and recognizing, again, I'm a parent myself, with kids in, that have been in uniforms, I've already invested a lot of money in the uniforms, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd be crazy about voting out the uniform, 'cause I can't imagine my girls wearing a uniform anymore if they didn't have to, um, so I, I recognize all that, um, but whenever we've had schools split, for example, Saint Benedict, this year's split to Saint Scholastica, again, the new community often overwhelmingly votes in favor of the uniform, once they've experienced it, again, take that for what it's worth, anecdotally, uh, but again, my advice to you is if you're seriously considering moving beyond the sole provider, you might wanna consider putting that policy for review before the RFP process, uh, begins and ends, uh, because that will happen this summer, because the contract ends on December thirty-first of this, this calendar year.
Secretary Daley, then, uh, trustee Agnew.
I, I, I think another consideration, uh, could be, um, regardless of the school or the municipality where, where people are choosing not to approve the uniform, um, it very well could be because that school community doesn't want a uniform, um, and that's really, I think, when the policy was developed, and it was decided that we would let individual sk, school communities decide, as opposed to a board-wide policy, it was exactly for that reason.
Trustee Agnew.
Um, so I just wanna say thank you, that's helpful, Superintendent Cepriano, um, and just, uh, a comment, um, just on what trustee Murphy had said, is, I agree with you, and you know, you look at sort of, that's the benefit of going with, uh, one supplier, right, is that you have the numbers to hopefully bring down some of the pricing, I think some of the things that the parents are looking at is the availability to not necessarily go with a traditional uniform supplier, per se, for even part of that uniform, so looking to go to those retailers that currently offer, you know, uh, dress code type of, um, um, garments, right, so they could go to anywhere and pick up their Navy pants, or their, so I think that's sort of where the thought is with respect to multiple suppliers versus, um, you know, two, um, um, uniform suppliers, per se, so they would maybe get their tops from a uniform supplier, and then have the option to buy bottoms somewhere else, so I think that's where the thought came from.
Trustee Charlebois.
Okay, so to maybe help clarify a bit, I mean, one of the reasons Georgetown could be rejecting it is because the closest ISW is twenty kilometers away from CTK, so it is, it is a fair distance, we have one in Oakville, we have one in Milton, we have one in Burlington, however Georgetown, it is distance, uh, to get there, uh, I can speak on the fact that I've had to wear a uniform for the last four years, uh, that, uh, ISW is actually substantially less expensive than McCarthy's, so that was a change, uh, but I mean, the, uh, one of the, the big factors is that, you know, we, we've mentioned that, like, schools can edit their uniform policy on their own, I know, being from Holy Trinity, our uniform policy, in the four years that I've been there, has changed two or three times, from allowing hoodies to black t-shirts and white, or black collared shirts and white collared shirts, the school rarely consults the community in a very effective way at all, I have never, ever been part of these, uh, the, the vote to change our uniform policies, nor have most of the families that I know, um, the decision for hoodies, uh, really stayed between staff, I know, because some staff didn't like the idea, and we heard a few rants in class, um, so I think that the, the idea of changing uniform policies based off, uh, the school is a great idea, however, it is administrat, administration's responsibility to actually reach out to the, to the community and students in an effective way, and not just keep it kind of below the radar, maybe post a small link on the bottom left corner of their website, hoping that, you know, assuming that maybe one person will find it, uh, so definitely, I think that in order for that section, that, uh, solution to be effective, uh, if a uniform, uh, change is in order, that everyone is notified effectively of it, uh, is, as well as, I think that, uh, you know, the, the ideas of uniforms are, are not bad in any way, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm, I'm a teenager, I've broken the uniform code countless times, uh, and I've been caught countless times, um, however, I think that, you know, there are also compromises that can be made depending on the communities, whether it's, you know, not needing to buy the pants and just one of the shirts, because that's really all that you see, uh, even between shoes, like I know Saint Ignatius of Loyola still requires all-black shoes, Holy Trinity doesn't, things like that, uh, so I think that, you know, those are factors that could also help alleviate the cost, I mean, no one really buys all-black shoes anymore, and shoes are very expensive these days, uh, that will cut down your uniform costs substantially, as well as the pants, things like that, uh, but the main thing is, uh, you know, depending on the, the choices we wanna make, if we wanna stay with the, the school having the ability to make the changes on their own, that they do truly do need to reach out to the community and actually get the response, opposed to keeping it below the radar.
Thank you, trustee Charlebois, trustee Antumasi.
So, um, through you, Mr. Chair, good points, um, trustee Charlebois, I, I'm just wondering if perhaps we need to, as, um, Superintendent Cepriano said, that we should revisit our policy, because all the points that you brought up all point back to our policy, so I would think before we go to RFP, um, we need to look at our policy and deal with all these items.
Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, many of our discussions, uh, in the past were about the sole supplier or not, and there have been some, um, stakeholder feedback on our uniform policy that would be probably interesting for us to review, um, I do concur that, you know, about the policy timeline, so that, 'cause we don't wanna do the RFP and then change, right, so you wanna, if we're gonna change anything, it should be done before, and... And given time, probably that, to go out to the stakeholders, any changes we make, because it is going to impact the community a lot, and hopefully for the positive, but it'd be important to get their feedback, as Trustee William has mentioned. So that's, yeah. Good, thank you for bringing it up.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm getting confused. Just listening and just from hearing some feedback that, whether it be online or through correspondence through parents, I think, again, it goes to the point of affordability but versus durability, right? We've got young kids who go through these uniforms. And one of the things we hear consistently is, is yes, in school is very much more affordable. It might not, there might not be as much wear and tear with the high school students, but with the elementary students, there is, and the feedback is, is that MacArthur had a superior product. That's what I hear consistently. But what I also hear consistently from the parents is, is look, well, maybe we look at it as more of a uniform guideline, including that, again, navy blue pants, especially with our elementary kids, because of the way they grow so quickly and the replacement value, like, who's kidding who? You can go to Old Navy, there are certain places you can go and buy pants for five to $10 in comparison, and they're simple navy blue pants. And even these stores actually carry a uniform line. So I think it is something that, prior to the RFP going out, I think it's something we should review just in good practice anyways, because why are we sending it out to tender without reviewing the policy, especially if we have to, because we have to, when we do the RFP process and we send it out and we commit, what is the length of the contracts that we're entering into with these? Three years?
Typically, they've been three years. And in the past, there's been extensions, but this current one is a three-year contract.
Trustee Murphy.
Just some comments. I would be concerned that we're opening up a can of worms. From my perspective, which is limited, I'll admit, it doesn't seem to be an issue. So I would be concerned about going down this path. The second comment just would be, in my opinion, it would be very hard to police if, if there's standardized offer from one supplier, then it's a yes or no. You're either compliant with your uniform or you're not. If you open up saying, okay, it's blue pants, then how blue is blue, what shade of blue, and then it makes it very difficult or onerous to police. And I think that would be difficult. And the whole idea is uniformity, is to make it all look the same, right? So I would be concerned about changing the policy to allow, open it up. I think it would be very difficult to police that, and we would lose the uniformity of it.
Superintendent Kroll.
A little bit more information. So there's 32 of 46 of our schools currently have uniform. And the other thing that was, I just wanted, that hasn't been mentioned yet, that was important in the development of the policy, in my understanding, was that part of the reason that we go with a single source provider, we can say that they're using fair labor practices. We spend a lot of time through the RFP process, the companies that provide those tenders to us, they go through a very rigorous process to ensure that we can say to our clients, our parents, that, you know, these are produced in fair labor factories.
Trustee Guzzo.
And I appreciate, thank you for, obviously, that is important. I know MacArthur's went through a huge rigor roll. Actually, I'm friends with the woman who led that as a student. But just to go back into Trustee Murphy, one of the things that was brought up that I heard as a comment from a parent, was a parent of a child with special needs who said that the uniforms that we provide don't necessarily meet the needs for their child. So just a point that, we talked about CAC not being part of it. I think that that is something that we should look at. So we also have to make sure, as I understand the uniformity piece of it, but when we're looking at children that have special requirements, or don't, they don't fit necessarily that uniformity piece. So I'm assuming we have something that addresses that. However, I think it's important that we bring it to part of the table. And I'm not saying that that's the answer, is that we change it, but I think that if we're going to go through the RFP process, it makes sense to tie that policy in ahead of time, to ensure that the changes align before we send it out to tender.
Superintendent Cipriano.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things, just to address, Trustee Guzzo, yes, absolutely, our students with special needs who have sensitivity to certain textiles or certain touch. We do, both McCarthy's prior to ISW, both companies were very accommodating in allowing parents to make their purchase of the appropriate clothing for their child, and they would crest it at no cost. So our students with special needs who have those specific textile needs, they look like they're in uniform, even though their uniforms might be different, they might have a different makeup. Just with regard to Trustee Charlebois's comments and concerns, I just want to be clear, Trustee William, so I know that you mentioned you had never been part of a school vote for four years. Our policy around voting is only for elementary schools, so that's why you wouldn't have experienced that at Holy Trinity. There is no voting for our secondary schools. And schools, within the policy, schools are given the opportunity to make changes, additions to their school uniform. They must consult, though, their school councils and their parent Catholic school councils. So again, I don't know specifically what happened at Holy Trinity, but I'm assuming that that would have happened every time they introduced a new product, whether it be a hoodie or some type of change, they would have had that consultation with their Catholic school council and student council.
Trustee Zarnotan.
Go ahead, because I was, this is just the last thing. I appreciate, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Cipriano. So what I will say then is, is then, I think for, because that comment came up in regards to a specific child in a school that doesn't have a uniform, that then may be the communication piece when we go to the policy, in the vote of the policy, that that is communicated. Because I think that may be where the misconception is coming from, and that's why we have some people who are saying, we don't want a policy because of X, Y, and Z. So maybe that's something that we can look at in the sense of what is communicated and the guidelines that we set. And I know it's by individual school, but maybe if we help standardize what the piece is and we debunk some of the misconceptions, that that might be more helpful.
Trustee Zarnotan.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone in the room. What a wonderful discussion we've just had, very robust. I would like to offer up for suggestion, for us all to go and ruminate on this topic, right? We brought it up for information. We come back on April the 2nd. If there's any more information, maybe we can reread the policy. And then at that time, if we feel it necessary to put in an action item or move it to policy, we can do it then. I'm just wondering how everybody feels about that suggestion.
Secretary Daley.
At the risk of extending the conversation, I just will note to trustees that we did review the policy February 2018.
So we're going to move on to the next item, which is Secretary Daley on autism update.
I'm going to ask Superintendent Cipriano and Wendy Reed Purcell, who's hung in there with us until 8:51, to provide just a bit of an update with regards to what's been happening provincially and potentially some of the impacts that we may be feeling at the board level.
Sure. And thank you, Director Daley, and thank you, Wendy, for, when she asked me what time should I be there, I said about 7:45, we should be on. So I owe you an hour back. Okay. So thank you for this opportunity to talk about the Ontario Autism Program. We're currently in the process of gathering specific data on the numbers of children with ASD currently receiving government-funded ABA, which is Applied Behavior Analysis Services through the Ontario Autism Program. We're hearing that not all of our students that will be fully discharged from the OAP now. At first, we thought they'd all be coming back to us approximately April 1st. We're hearing now that some will be, their services will be extended into June, and they might not be coming back to our schools full-time until June or even beyond that. We're working to determine how many students are scheduled for April versus June discharge. In addition, we're gathering data on grade levels and levels of needs, because not every student with ASD that is receiving government therapy have the same needs coming back to us. Some are, will require very little in adult support, EA support, some will require quite a bit, and they have complex needs, they'll need more intense support. Our greatest concern in response to the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services decisions is in having adequate EA support. At the current number that we have, again, it's an approximate number, we're looking at possibly 45 to 50 students. We've had our consultants meeting with our schools and our school special education resource teachers, and that's the number that we're ballparking in the number of students coming back to us. Now, I know the ministry on, I believe, March the 15th, 15th, made an announcement about funding. From my understanding, the $12,300 that they used, that is the average funding that they provide to school boards for per pupil funding. So all of our kids receive that. And that $12,300, when you consider that in Halton Catholic, as you all know now, I think you all had that presentation earlier, that we are the lowest funded Catholic school, or school board in the province, that number actually has decreased to $10,500. And when you consider, again, that these students are already, for the most part, the majority of that 45 to 50 students are already enrolled in our schools. They're just attending our schools on a part-time basis. So again, I'm not sure, there's not, there's no details, but I'm not sure if we're going to receive any or part of that $12,300 that was announced. And recognizing that many of these students come to us with very complex needs, we don't have a stable of educational assistance just waiting to be deployed. We've deployed all of our educational assistance, obviously, when we received funding for September. And so we are, we essentially, without any greater extra funding, would be providing these services with the same number of VAs that we currently have, supporting all of the kids in our system. The good news is that our priorities in Special Education Department continue to be to transition these students into our schools. We've done a lot of work with ABA strategies for our staff. We have our behavior analysts supporting our schools. We've done a lot of PD, in some ways, very thankfully, well in advance of this announcement, with prior to, even to this government taking office, we supported our schools over the last year or two years with what we call ABA for All strategies. We have different projects happening at our school, State Play Talk, Peers. So we've been doing a lot of great work in our schools. So we are very well situated. Again, the biggest challenge will be educational assistance support for these students. Again, going forward, we're hoping that we will receive more information around the funding from the government to help us with the work to support these students from April to the end of June, and then again into next year. We've hired a half-time speech and language pathologist to help students with alternative augmented communication systems, which will help not only our students with ASD, but other students in communicating with their teachers and their classmates. We continue to serve our students through our TD rounds, transdisciplinary rounds at Tier One and Tier Two, again, using our behavior analysts. And I'm really proud, again, this is prior to my role in the department, my predecessor, Dr. Brendan Brown, we invested in behavior analysts at the board. For a board of our size, we have a large number of behavior analysts that support our schools. These are behavior analysts, VAs, we refer to them, that they're trained in the methodologies that these students are receiving privately right now, and they're training our staff in using what we term educational ABA strategies in our schools. So we're, we, over the, I can tell you, over the last six months that I've been in the role, how many times, I can't tell you how many times I've been contacted by other school boards to find out what our model is, because we're well situated. And again, I give a lot of credit to Dr. Brendan Brown and Wendy Reed Purcell's here tonight. She's done a lot of work in supporting other boards in the work that they're trying to do to support their schools. Again, because we see this provincially as, these are all our kids. We're supporting all these kids with these special needs. I'd be happy to answer any other further questions. Wendy's here, who is, again, a fantastic resource to help you better understand the Ontario Autism Program and how the effect is happening, how it's happening in our schools.
Trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Cipriano. I just have one question, well, I have lots of questions, but I have one question specific. So we spoke about, you know, possibly what that needs can be for additional EA support, and we're not sure what that's going to look like right now. And I know that we have a robust BA contingency right now, but are we looking at needing additional behavior analysts as well, if we're going to have those students come into the school systems full-time? Wendy, maybe that's a...
That's not right now on our radar. Again, we, for board our size, for our population of students, we have a large number of VAs. And again, the role of the BA is to support schools. It's, you know, coaching to train the teachers and the certs and our I teams in supporting their schools. And so our most imminent needs right now are supporting those kids as they come into our classrooms.
All right. I do have another question. So, and I understand that we are going to, we're not sure what those numbers look like right now, right, from April to June. So I guess two parts. So one is going to be for those students, we already have all of our allocations right now, I believe, for our EA supports. So, you know, what are we looking at as far as reallocations from that April to June, if necessary? And then from September onwards, what do we, I mean, we know there's no new funding. What's the, how do we do that? How do we manage that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's really right now in a case-by-case, depending, because again, not every child that comes back to us from therapy is going to require the same level of EA support. We know some will require, you know, full-time, one-to-one support. And we will have to, in those instances, figure out, you know, school by school, it really is unfortunately robbing Peter to pay Paul, you know, trying, grouping students together, you know, trying to place these students in classrooms with existing EA support. It's not ideal. Again, without knowing a lot of details around the funding that's going to come with it, and even with the funding, hiring EAs is not an easy thing. We want to hire the best EAs, want to hire the best staff. And so, I mean, it would, even if we do get the money, and we're hopeful we get some extra funding, the whole process, by the time you go through interviews and hiring and placement, even, and that's considering we have some really great quality staff just waiting to be hired. I mean, there's a lot of uncertainties. So right now, we're, you know, the plan is to plan for, in some ways, to plan for the worst, to do what we can with what we've got, and then hope for September. I mean, for us, really, the long-term plan is really September, you know, looking at the funding in a way that we can maybe hire more EA support. But in the short term, it's really a case-by-case. Wendy, is there anything more you can add?
Secretary Daley, did you want to say something?
Certainly, in terms of the longer-term view for September, I mean, we will be considering our budget over the next month and a half, and it's obviously going to be something that we're going to need to consider.
Okay. Any more comments? So miscellaneous information, we have CPIC minutes that have been included as part of your package. Rose, is there any other correspondence? No other correspondence? And any questions? No questions. So we're going to move back into camera. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Could I introduce it now?
Ah, yes, absolutely.
Okay. It has been in the news in the last week about the changes to the class size for high school. Can, has any analysis been done? Could somebody provide an update of how it's going to impact our planning?
I can certainly update you in camera.
Actually, actually, my error was back in camera.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
So can I have a motion to move back in camera, please? Mr. Antomas, seconded. Trustee Zarnota, all in favor? Motion passes. Does anybody need a five-minute break before we go back into camera? Okay, five minutes.